That's what it must be a new thing.
Yeah, you know.
I guess it's a good thing.
When I was on, that must be, it might be something. I was on one last week and it did the same thing.
I think they just, they didn't know. Well, the state. So. Now, I think they just, they updated Zoom app a lot of dates. But I know.
That's interesting. Very important. Thing. Company. We've got a lot of this. It's been trouble with Barbara's group reading. So she's done a lot of things. America. Just to jump the water, we posted up. So how like. Because we're going to.
You have to add a reminder.
Yeah.
So. Go ahead and count back.
Lisa. Where'd that come from?
The lady in red and you didn't even know that.
I'm sorry.
So for. The liquor license public here.
Yep.
Attorney Fox is going to be speaking on behalf of. Crystal.
Oh. Attorney Fox.
Yeah, David Fox.
Father of son. Chief Peters is.
Chief Ford.
No, but.
Yeah.
On a liquor license. Sometimes Chief Peters weighs it. No. No issues now. They don't have.
Anything.
You could ask. Yeah. This is Roberts. Okay. We will get going. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 24th Town Council meeting. Before we start, if I could take a moment. Moment of silence for a minimum serving in harm's way of blessed allegiance. Blessed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republicans, which is saying, one nation, under God. In this world, liberty and justice. Thank you all. Okay. In with. For those of you participating from home. During the course of the meeting. Raise your hand. I can style dial star nine on your phone. And then star six would allow you to unmute yourself. If you were sitting online through the Zoom app. There is the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. For those of you there that will be participating when called upon, please state your name and address to the town clerk. And then we will begin and we'll take our roll call.
Ms. Ujikusa.
Yeah.
Ms. Abbott. Mr. Buttermeyer.
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Ryan here.
Here. Motion passed. Well, that's no motion. Getting ahead of myself, sorry. But it's one of those Mondays. Prior to. Session here, council did have an executive session at six o'clock under Rhode Island general law 4246. Five eight one personnel town administrator. Going into executive session, I reported that we were going into executive session and it was a five to zero vote. I stand corrected, it was six to zero, Councilor Abbott not present. During executive session, one vote was taken and that vote was six to zero again, Councilor Abbott was not present. That concludes my executive summary. And we will be moving on to our consent agenda.
Motion to seal the minutes.
But.
No, that was already done.
Nope, we're good. You're, you're ahead of me.
Okay.
No, we're on the consent agenda.
Motion, motion, this is Keith Hamilton, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Andrew Kelly, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa.
Hi.
Mr. Buttermeyer.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Oh, shoot.
Dr. Ryan.
Sorry, I, by this mute and mute, unmute thing is not working. Hi.
I. Let the ministry flip now.
You haven't had the hand raised.
We have a hand raised. Okay. Hold on one second here. Good evening, Mr. Fitzmorris. You have a question? Comment?
Yes, sir, I do. Larry Fitzmorris, 50, Kristen Court. Regarding the vote in executive session. May I know the motion, please?
Nope, that was executive session under, under. Rhode Island general law 424685 was personnel for the town administration. So what was five to zero, that's what I can report, six to zero, sorry, six to zero. That's what I can report out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we will be sitting at the Board of License Commissioners. And our first item is entertainment license. There's actually three for the Newport film. For some screenings. We could take them individually or we could do them all, ones at the Glen Park on July 29th. From six to 10:30 PM. The second one is at the International Polo Grounds on August 12th from 6:30 to 10:30. And the third one. Be at Safe Harbor New England Folk Works on August 26th from 6:30 to 10:30.
This is Mark Ryan, move to approve all three.
Second, this is Linda.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa.
Hi.
Mr. Buttermeyer.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Ryan here.
Hi. Passes. Zero. Now we. Next item is a public hearing, so liquor license application to class B. Liquor license KJK LLC doing business at Thriving Tree Coffee House. I believe we have Attorney Fox on the line.
Sorry about that. That mute. Yes, you do. David F. Fox for the applicant KJK LLC.
Move to approve.
Michael Buttermeyer, second. We, we have to wait for public comment first.
Yeah. Okay, do we have? Not seeing. Well, the attorney question, do you want, go ahead, Mr. Hamilton?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. President, I just, just a couple of quick questions. Knowing the owner of the facility, I'm assuming this is not going to be a all hours of the night type of establishment anyways, but. What hours are we anticipating that the liquor license is going to be utilized for?
The intention is that the nine o'clock hour is going to be the latest that it's going to be operating. The idea is for specific events like weddings, graduation parties. You know, any kind of celebration, but in the earlier side of the evening, not an all night affair.
Somebody to come have a nice glass of wine or something and watch the sunset in an Adirondack chair perhaps?
Correct, correct, and that's the vibe that the Thriving Tree Cafe throws, you know, currently, it's, it has a, a certain. Appeal to both the property and to the way that Kristen has, has run the. The cafe. That'll continue out the back.
And at beginning time, so if we, if we made the license somewhere in the direction of ten to 10, that would be okay, obviously with. Doing on Sundays.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any additional questions, any comments from counselors? And it is a public hearing. Any? Any comments?
If I could make a comment?
Sure.
I, I just, I wasn't able to get on the viewpoint and get all the attachments and download them, but I just wanted to point out that the. The license, the license is granted and issued, it's, it needs to be a defined premises where beverages will be offered for sale. Consumed and stored, and it has to be associated with the. With the food service or restaurant business. At, at all times, so I didn't see, I haven't seen a diagram or a description of the licensed premises. It, it, I know there are some attachments there I could not, I was not able to access, so maybe, maybe everything's all set, but I just wanted to point that out. Before the council may wish to grant a license, it's got to be a defined licensed premises. And it has to be, by law, it has to be associated with the food service business, it's not to have. You know, parties out on the lawn. There's no relationship with the restaurant business.
There is a diagram that's included with the, the package that shows the area that where the services. Intended.
I just wasn't able to access it. I just wanted to bring that out in case it was may, maybe an issue or not, I don't know.
And it's attached to the Thriving Tree Cafe. You know, from the rear of the, of the restaurant.
Possible for us to bring up the application.
Are you able to access the, I'm trying to access it now. Yeah.
In viewpoint.
It's supposed to be defined with dimensions and so forth, so we know what the licensed premises are.
The advertised. May 14th letter to the council or to the butters rather, identifies the area that is noted on the diagram that's included with the package. So there is a defined area to it.
Okay, I. Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't able to access that online today.
Kevin, do we have to give specific approval for outdoor use as well?
Yeah, if, if the, if outdoor use is part of the defined licensed premises, it's got to be, yeah, it's got to be part of the definition. Oftentimes, you know, the places will get a liquor license, a BV license. For the interior of a restaurant and then later want to ban to have a year round deck or patio or some of that nature. Or, or just to increase, you know, to put on an addition. Any expansion of the license other than a temporary seasonal expansion requires another application in a, in a hearing with notice to a butters. So I guess my main, the main issue here, I'm saying is, if a license is issued, it should be specifically defined what the licensed premises are, so there's no confusion later.
Yeah, it's, doesn't show.
Scroll down and click on the attachments down there.
The notice to the butters does define an area, it is intended to be in the lawn area, but a specified portion that may be intended.
Not showing on this one, but. Showing on my side where we do the license.
Right, they, the, the. The diagram is not online.
Not in the public one.
There, there is a pretty good description of it in the notice to the butters and we're satisfied with that, and I think that might address Kevin's concerns. That a specific area be identified, so if the description given in, in the notice to the butters is satisfactory to the council, then. We're willing to go with that.
And again, the other part of it is, it has to be in conjunction with the restaurant business, the food service, the, the area where. Alcohol beverages are being served and consumed, it has to be. Part of the restaurant business, it's not. A BV license is not, you know, you know, just permission to hold parties that have nothing to do with the restaurant or the food service part of it. And, and just, I'm just, I have an abundance of caution because I think in the past there was some confusion over this. And, and. A few years ago, when this, this establishment was looking to get a BV license, so I just want to make sure that. Right now, before our license is issued, that, that we understand the rules.
Right, so any event that happens has to be in conjunction with food service from the facility, it's not just. Having a party in the backyard. And it has to be within the defined property lines, which. Kind of diagonally cuts between that and the old motel property.
Well, not, not the property lines, it's the lines that are established by the licensing board for this liquor license.
They're described in the notice to the butters and which are.
It's not like the entire square footage of the lot. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they've asked for because I wasn't able to get the document, but. You know, to, to just put an address and say that that's, there's a liquor license and, and they can. Do anything they want on the entire square footage of the lot. Yeah. It, it's, that's not the intent of the statute in the, in the DBR rules. It's supposed to be a specific defined area of the licensed premises and dimensions, et cetera, so we know exactly where liquor is allowed to be sold and served. And it has to be done in conjunction with the restaurant business.
So that, just, I, I believe. Was provided, there, there was a diagram, except that the diagram, we're trying to access it now, it's on, it wasn't attached to the.
Mr. President, I have a question. This is Linda. Hello.
Yeah, I think the sound of the town council's out, or town hall.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, well, town, town of Portsmouth is muted. Is that okay? No, because I can't hear Kevin.
I feel like Mark.
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, I have a question for our town solicitor, so. I know that. Thrive has had this fabulous fireworks show around Fourth of July, and are you saying that the license would not allow them? Because they have the back, you know, cordoned off, so people have little spaces. You couldn't order a drink and then have them bring you a drink when you're at the Fourth of July party, is that what you're saying?
Not unless it's within the confines of the licensed premises that is established by the town council as the licensing board.
And it wouldn't be appropriate to have.
We just need to see the map of where it sits, correct?
We're trying, we're trying to hang in there, we're trying to access that diagram, they did provide a diagram and, and I, I was muted, so I'm going to repeat myself. I, I think what Attorney Fox was saying is, is they provided that information in a diagram. Counsel hasn't seen that diagram, the town clerk is trying to get that diagram right now, and if the diagram would, to Solicitor Gavin's point, diagram would be the, I guess, the request for the licensed premises. Which might be a certain area inside the restaurant as well as outside the restaurant. Is that correct, Attorney Fox?
It is.
Okay. Just give us a, it is, we're in a public hearing, just give us a few minutes. I, I see that. Kristen Kidd is also available.
Now, I don't know either of them have the diagram either. If I.
Attorney Fox, do you have the diagram?
I have the diagram, I'm not sure how to get it to you.
On the screen. Yeah. Can you, can you pull it up on your screen and we can, we can give you permission to share your screen?
I.
Ms. Kristen?
Hang, hang on for just a second.
Can you? Promote, well, can you access, can you? Give Kristen? A mic, just so I can ask her.
Go right ahead.
Kristen, can you hear us?
Yes.
Kristen, do, do you have the diagram? Andy, possibly?
I, I downloaded it to the. I know Mandy.
Yeah, we have it.
I have a picture of the, of the. The letter that was sent out. There's roughly 7,000 square feet back. It's going to be roped off from the water. 30 feet back from the water. And. It's nautical. Back to the coffee shop, which is roughly about 7,000 square feet, which I figured would be with the tent. When they do have a tent and people want weddings and different functions like that or fundraisers. That people are allowed to drink inside the tent, I'm not looking for people to be out like roaming around everywhere with drinks. But I've done, you know, I did a lot of weddings last year and I wasn't allowed to, I had to get the insurance for the BYOB and I wasn't making any money on that.
Okay, yeah, no, but bear with us here, I think if we can just pull up this, the, the diagram that would clarify it. You did share that with the butters, this is a public hearing, so if folks did have an, if you did have comments, now would be the time. So just give us a few minutes. I know Attorney Fox was trying to see if he could access the diagram as well.
I have the, the diagram on my screen, I don't know how to. How to share my screen with you.
Mr. President, I just want to, just to clarify, I'm sorry if I'm beating a dead horse here, but I just want to read, there's two parts of this, it's the defined premises and it's also the. The food service, let me just read from the regulations. A class B licensee is defined as any shop or any, or at the place where it is furnished. I'm sorry, in order to comply with this provision, the licensee must offer to the public in conjunction with the sale of alcoholic beverages. The opportunity to purchase and consume food to be served on the premises in the, in the same area designated for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. These foods must be offered for sale during all times that alcoholic beverages are sold and consumed on the licensed premises. So I just bring that to the council's attention because I, I get the impression that. What's contemplated here may be something different than serving alcoholic beverages with, with a restaurant that serves food. It, it, it sounds like that they want to have special events and, and things that have no relationship to their restaurant business or coffee shop business. As, as, and to use this as a special event venue. And I just want to caution the council to be aware of that before. Issuing a license that, that may or may not be, have some ambiguity to it that we're then arguing about at some point in the future.
There is always food available. All the time.
So if you were having, Kristen, if you were having a, a, a function. You would be providing the food from the, off of your menu?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I mean, so I guess, I guess the. I guess the concern that the solicitor is bringing up is. If it was a special, a special function, it might fall outside of the restaurant operations. How would that be? How would that be handled if you, if you?
Be specifically talking about like the fireworks?
No, I, I think you mentioned a wedding, so say you were going to have a wedding function and you were going to serve food from your, you were going to provide the food.
Yes.
The wedding would be a, a quote, special function, obviously you'd have to get a tent permit and stuff like that.
Yes.
Is there, and I should probably know this. But how would that be different, Mr. Gavin, would they need an additional approval from the town for a, to have a special function?
I. Well, no, I just, what I'm saying is, is I don't think that type of event may be part of what is normally considered a BV license, which is a restaurant serving. Alcoholic beverages as part of their food provision, it's not a, a, a special, you know, a special event venue, it's not, I don't even know the. Our ordinance, we really qualify for. You know, a special event venue for, for, for all kinds of special events that have nothing to do with, and, and it's also going to be foods. Food served and prepared in their kitchen for their customers, not, not just. Having special events, having some third party throw special events. On their land area that, that may have nothing to do with their restaurant or coffee shop.
This one isn't, this is not the right one that's on here.
But, Mr. Gavin, with, with that. Thought process, then. Any facility in town has been breaking the law if they had a birthday party. At 15 Point Road or Tremblay's or Locals.
No, not, not.
Are you saying that they're not allowed to have birthday parties? Or anniversary parties?
They have it on the licensed premises as part of their. Food service, part of their restaurant, if some, some restaurant has a, has a, a room. If some, some restaurant has a, has a, a room for large parties and they, and they, you know, have, someone has a, whatever, the, you know, bridal shower or, or a birthday party or whatever, if they're, they're serving food from their menu on their, that's made in their kitchen for their customers, then that's part of the BV license.
Isn't that, isn't that what they're doing here? Wouldn't the grass area be considered the special room for birthday parties or whatever?
Yes.
So I, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the difference, so.
No, I, I don't have the diagram, but I mean, if they're at, if they're having, I was bringing it to the council, council's the licensing board. I'm just bringing these issues to, to the council's attention and, and just, just so that we know that there's a defined area for the license, for the liquor license. And just so, just to remind the applicant that this is a license, if granted, that would allow sale of alcoholic beverages as part of the restaurant operation, not as some kind of separate special event venue.
And Kristen, you, 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 I, maybe you state the fact that you're not looking to be a bar, you're looking to just drive revenues along with your food. So they would always be in conjunction, correct?
I'm absolutely not looking to be a bar. This, the, the area is so beautiful. They've got this beautiful sunset and so many people want to have things in the backyard. And coffee's just not kicking it for me, you know, it's like my property taxes alone are like 11,000. Then you've got the flood insurance, which is another 10,000. That's, that's 20 something thousand dollars already. And I just, you know, if I'm going to, if I'm going to cater a wedding and then I have to get insurance for them to do a BYOB, you know, here's money out of my pocket and it's just, you know, it's just, please help a small business. We're trying the best we can. We want to remain, we want to remain elegant. I don't want to ever make that, you know, a bar.
Kristen, this is, this is not an issue with you or the application. It's just as part of the public hearing, we need to be able to see and define the area so that the public knows where the area is. Mr. Gavin is just trying to cover our butts, not yours.
Oh, I get it. And I did, I did do a drawing about just 30 feet away from the water with, with the nautical rope. But you guys can't find it right now, but I'm trying to.
Attorney Fox, I think has it. I think we were going to just.
Well, there was one that was just put up, but it was the wrong one.
Wrong one.
Mandy had me do a second one. And she had me, and she had me write a, a letter to you guys. And I.
I, I know we're, we're working on it and I appreciate everyone's patience.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Gavin. Can you, can you give a hypothetical of what you're afraid we might be approving, which is not appropriate under this license?
Again, I, I haven't seen the drawing, but it, my hypothetical that comes to my mind is that, that the applicant believes that they have a, a right to sell and serve alcoholic beverages on the entire acreage of their property, even if it has no relationship to their coffee shop, shop business. In other words, the whole point of a BV is you, it, it's served alcohol in conjunction with a restaurant or, you know, Vitler's House. And if that's not, if there's no connection there, then it wouldn't be proper business activity of, of a BV license holder to just open up or, 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 you know, rent the, the entire backyard overlooking the water, which is a beautiful facility, but just to rent it out for special events that, that is, is, has not, are not part of the restaurant operation.
Kevin, I do have, um, I have this here. I can, I can text you the picture of my diagram.
Um, hold on.
If you text it to me, I'll email it to myself and get up online pretty quickly.
Okay.
That would be the best option.
And I have, can I have a phone number to text it to?
401-480.
480?
Six, yep, 480-6648.
6648.
It's on the website anyway, so.
Right.
I'm sorry. Here it comes.
So I wanted to point out that not a defined area in the notice to a Butters. It's not a, the whole backyard or the whole property unregulated. It is defined. And it is in conjunction with the food service from the Thrive Cafe.
But it's, but it's not in, it's, it's not being shown in the public hearing, so bear with us for a second.
Just trying to access it so that it can be shown. And I do know that there are some folks that have their hands up. Mr. Crosby's got his hand up and then we also have on a butter. Hold on one moment and then I'll go to Mr. Crosby because he might have additional information.
Barbara, can, can you allow me to share my screen, please?
My screen.
We're working on it. You could only see what's going on behind the scenes here.
The anticipation is killing me.
Mr. Chairman, this is Gary Crosby. Can I, can I pop in?
In order of doing this.
Hold on a second, Mr. Crosby, because I, I'm, I'm not sure something's, I, I don't know if the screen's going to change, so.
So this is the letter?
But it's not being shown on the screen. We're going to share, hold on, we're going to share, we're going to share the, the screen. We do have the letter and the plan that was provided to the Butters with the notice. Is that correct? Yep. Correct. So these are the, the dimensions.
That's the old one.
Yeah, that's still in the, keep moving down.
Keep going down?
Okay, I'm sorry. There it is.
Okay.
Oh, color coded it.
Okay. Does the area behind it, so the, the license would cover inside the building as well as this area outside the building?
Yes.
And just, I'm just trying to reference things. So facing the water, you would be able to, to go up to your fence line?
Yes, with, with alcohol, I mean.
And then you'd be about, is it 30, does this say 35 feet from the water?
Yes.
Okay, then it, it would be 70 feet across toward, towards the, I guess, to the north. And then you have an area that says no alcohol.
Yeah, that's where, um, beyond that is where the motels start to get into play. But it's not even near the property, it's not even near the property line at that point.
Right. And you would have this area that's approximately 100 by 70 roped off?
Yes, and also there'll be signs that say no alcohol beyond this point. And the reason for that, I had my tent guy come and he, he helped me figure out exactly what would, um.
What you could put back there?
Where I could, where I could put back there.
Okay, all right. So this is, I think this is the, to Mr. Gavin's point about the licensed area. So if this were to be, I'm going to take it in a couple of steps. If this were to be approved, this would be the licensed area approximately behind the building.
Yes.
70.
Yes.
Along with what was inside the building.
Yes.
And again, the food service would, would also have to be provided so that food would be coming off of your, your menu during these hours.
Absolutely.
Okay. I would now like to just switch, Mr. Crosby, if I could?
Yes, thank you. Now that I've seen this diagram, in the past, can you hear me?
Yes, we, we.
In the past, we have seen a diagram for a previous event where it showed alcohol serving bleeding off to the north into an adjacent piece of property. And now that I see this, and I'm sure Kevin will agree with me that, that I'm, I'm satisfied at any rate that, that, that no alcohol will be served off to, to the adjacent property to the north.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. I, at this point, I think we have some hands up from the public. Lou, well, Kristen was speaking. Okay, so then Lou?
Hi, my name is Lou Pastana and I go to Thrive Coffee Shop quite regularly and I know Kristen very well. As a matter of fact, I'm going to have my 70th birthday party there. Hopefully we'll have booze.
So you're in favor?
She really does, you know, and I know she's going to do a good job and I like what she did here with the 35 feet of, away from the water. And she did put a nice fence up at the, at the front of it. So I know she's gonna, she's gonna make you guys proud. I just wanted to put my input in.
Lou, could, could we just get your address for the rest?
77 Main Sail Drive, Tiverton, Rhode Island. And I'd rather go there than the boathouse.
Oh. We appreciate the opportunity to open your business. Okay. Under, so it seems like that was the only one. Attorney Fox, Kristen, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. I just hope that you guys will trust me. I do, I definitely, I'm never going to turn this into a bar. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a great thing for the community. It really is. We can do fundraisers here, tons of things for the town.
Thank you.
Hamilton, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Andrew Kelly.
Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi, motion passes six to zero.
Keith Hamilton again, motion to approve the Class BV license for the Thriving Creek Coffee Shop, Coffee House.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Frustrated.
Wasn't, hi, hi. I don't know why that didn't go through. My screen was showing not muted, so I don't know.
Hi, the motion passes six to zero. Thank you all. Kristen, wish you well. Thank you for your patience tonight during the process. We got it right at the end, so I, I hope we've addressed the concerns of, of any Butters or interested parties. Thank you all and thank you to my counselors for helping to, you know, stall.
Keith Hamilton, a motion to adjourn as the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Mark Ryan seconded.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Next, we have minutes from our May 10th in our May 17th Town Council meeting.
Move to approve.
This is Mark Ryan seconded.
Mr. President, can we separate those? As I was not in attendance for the 17th.
Okay, let's take the, on May 10th.
Move to approve, Andrew Kelly.
Mark.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes zero. And you know what? I was out on the 17th, so I will have to.
Move to approve the minutes of May 17th as presented.
Keith Hamilton second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I was here. Hi, sorry. Having a rough night. Motion passed five to zero. Thank you. I ended up doing over. I really do. Next, we have tax vouchers, requests approved, tax vouchers 20210524-01.
So moved, Andrew Kelly.
Seconded, Mark Ryan.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Next, we have our town administrators' report. Mr. Rayner?
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, Rhode Island has now vaccinated over 1.1 million people. And at this point, as of this week, and over 500,000 are fully vaccinated. Reminder that to be considered fully vaccinated, you are two weeks past your second dose of the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, or two weeks past your single dose of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. The state has lifted its mask mandate for those who are fully vaccinated, however, masks are still required in certain settings. So the state is asking everybody to be patient and understanding of various businesses and their restrictions. The state has updated its reopening guidelines as of last Friday, and these guidelines can be found on the state's reopeningri.com and the town's websites. We will establish a Prudence Island Meds Pod this week to deliver the Johnson and Johnson vaccine to island residents. And that pod will be established at the Farnum Farms and vaccines will be administered from 12 to 13, 1:30 in the afternoon. I'd just like to say thank you to the EMA Director, our Meds Pod Coordinator, the Fire Chief, and all the people and volunteers who helped make this happen. Lastly, we expect everyone in Town Hall to have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated by June 11th. We therefore expect to open Town Hall on Monday, June 14th. We are waiting for guidance with respect to open meetings and the current executive order as those who apply to meetings in public, Town Council meetings, zoning board meetings, planning. And with respect to the Anne Hutchinson Building, the Compass Group Architecture Group is finalizing, at this point, their assessment of the Anne Hutchinson Building. And their report outlining the cost to renovate that building and bring it into compliance with applicable fire safety and building codes should be delivered early next month. The Police Department has been awarded a grant to purchase an ultrasonic weapons cleaner for use at their range. The grant is for the complete cost of the unit, including shipping, so a value of $2,700. The grant was awarded by the Rhode Island Chapter of the 100 Club. The 100 Club of Rhode Island was founded in 1972 by a group of local businessmen as a private charitable organization. And its primary mission is to provide financial assistance to the families of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics who have lost their lives on the line of duty. There is no match required by the town for this award. With respect to the Linden Lane Stonewall Project, I reported at the last meeting that we look forward to continuing the Linden Lane Stonewall repair program again this year. We have since determined a Tuesday through Saturday schedule, which will begin. We have since determined a Tuesday through Saturday schedule, which will begin uh with a training workshop on July thirteenth from nine to five. Regular workday shifts will be from nine to twelve P M and then from twelve thirty P M to three thirty P M. The second training workshop workshop will be on July seventeenth from nine to five. We expect this to be a consistent group that will likely only work Saturdays based on our availability. On the non-training Saturdays, the schedule will be nine A M to two P M, and we will expect volunteers to stay for the duration of that time. The program will end August twenty-eighth, and the only Saturday we anticipate not working outside will be August twenty-first. Uh, this information and applications for volunteers will be posted to the town website on Wednesday. And then additionally, I received word late this afternoon that a cleaning operation is scheduled for the Algonquin Gas Transmission Pipeline from June second through June ninth. This will require the staging of equipment at the Old Mill Lane Natural Gas Injection Site, but on a smaller scale than the winter operations. The butters will be notified this week. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Okay. You're gonna move on to full business. First item is our monthly financial court.
Mr. Lisa Lassie? I'm giving the report for the month then, April twenty twenty-one. As of the end of the month, we're eighty-three percent through fiscal year. The year day general line revenues were at seventy-eight percent with the fourth quarter taxes due on June first. Including the relief funds, as adjusted for the state, partially covered by vehicle excise tax stays out, revenues are about seventy-nine percent. But these revenues projections have been revised downward due to impact of COVID and certain laws that can cause collection of collected fees. Uh, general fund expenditures are the two percent of the budget of the budget in line with the percentage of fiscal year. The town administrator did put a spending order in that to limit any discretionary spend. Discretionaries. And at this point, we are still anticipating coming within budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Do you have any comments, questions?
Mr. Rayner, excuse me, this is Keith Hamilton. Mr. Rayner, do you anticipate having to move any mon- money around within the budget to cover any over overage is, I tried to say?
All right, now, we're gonna take a closer look at it. This is obviously the report from last month. So about this point next month, we'll have a better idea of it. As Lisa just pointed out, there is a spending freeze in effect for all discretionary spending. But if you look at uh the expenditures and revenues, those are in line with where we were at this point last year, so uh, right now, we have a tight uh watch on it, and we'll notify the council before the end of fiscal year if there's any reallocation.
Motion to receive and place on file.
We gotta, we have a hand up. Uh, I just need to go to Mr. Fitzmorris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that this uh projection for the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth is for a positive result, a surplus. Was that, was that correct?
It's on track to be on budget. We don't wanna forecast a surplus at this point. Uh, we still have to wait for the uh next quarter's tax receipts and uh, I think it would be prudent at this point, after we put in the spending freeze uh, to see where we are at this point next next month, I think we'll be able to give you a better idea, but you are correct. I mean, strictly interpreted, yes, we are on track for a surplus, but uh, we still have a lot of invoices and receipts that we'll have to reconcile before the end of fiscal year.
Now, when I take a look at the bottom line on page four for this report, it shows a four hundred and eighteen thousand dollar deficit. At least it's in parentheses.
Kelly, again, that's just a projection, uh, but at this time, uh, we have HR and finance working on uh, more refined figures for payroll. Uh, so obviously, uh, those payroll expenditures for the remaining pay periods in the rest of the year still have to be factored into this, and I think Lisa needs to add something.
So what the four hundred and eighteen you're seeing is what we are under budget for our revenue. That is not what we are anticipating as a surplus or deficit. That's just the revenue side. So if you look at the expenditures, you can see that the expenditures are still anticipated to be sixty-six billion. Our revenue is still expected to be sixty-seven million, but we are like in this report that he just said, we're not gonna, we have a lot of bills to still process. We have, you know, year end, we have a spending freeze in place, so we're not going to be able to tell you what when we're gonna end with a surplus or a deficit of this.
Okay, but when I read this thing. Hello?
Yeah, hold on a second, Mr. Fitzmorris.
Can you see what I'm saying with the revenue and the expenditures?
I'm trying to, hang on.
So.
So you're saying this this number on, which is marked as total general fund.
That is.
Right, so if you look.
The revenue.
If you look at page two of two, Mr. Fitzmorris.
Okay. I've got a copy of this. I'm looking, two of two or two of four?
Well, the expenditures, the total general fund expenditures, which is two of two, which is page two of two for expenditures.
Okay.
See, annual projection there is sixty-six point six five million. So if you compare that to projected revenues of sixty-seven point nine million, you see that there's a substantial surplus, but we don't wanna say that right now until we've processed final payroll periods, uh, receipts, uh, and uh invoices uh, and done the reconciliation. So that's why we're saying that we're on track to be on budget. We're not, we're not anticipating a deficit, but uh, again, we don't know what we don't know until we've uh processed everything over the next month and a half.
Okay, I understand, and I thank you for your explanation.
All right, back to Mr. Hamilton.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second, this is Linda.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jafusa?
Aye.
Mr. Bunnier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Sir Kelly, you're muted? Okay, well.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. When I say the motion passes five to zero, uh, one abstention. Okay. We are moving on to new business, uh, which is a presentation from the Rhode Island public term fight card, concerning bus shelters. Is uh, we have, is it, is Greg?
Hi, Lo.
Good evening, Mr. Norton.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, Town Council for um, for your time this evening. My name is Greg Norden. I am Ripta's Chief of Strategic I oversee Ripta's planning, uh, customer service, marketing, and um, project management functions. And I'm joined this evening by our Director of Service Planning and Scheduling, Ed Brown. Um, we were asked, we were asked to um present to the Board by Councilman Kelly. He reached out to us a few weeks weeks ago regarding uh, the lack of bus shelters, quite frankly, in Portsmouth, and wanted to understand a little more about why we didn't have bus certain bus shelters in Portsmouth. And we thought it might be prudent that we come to the Board and just give a brief presentation about the services that Ripta is providing um within Portsmouth already right now. So we've actually prepared a one-page summary, which I believe has been shared with everyone. If not, I'm happy to do a screen share. Um, but it looks like it's actually pulled up right now. Uh, and this just outlines some of the services that Ripta is providing to Portsmouth, so um, just a little bit about Ripta. We're we're the state, obviously, we're the statewide transit, we're a statewide transit provider. We provide about sixteen million trips a year across the state. We serve um thirty-six to thirty-nine municipalities in the state and um, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. Is that me?
And we're not getting anything on this end. I don't know, are the counselors hearing any feedback?
Yeah, you guys got a mute.
Yeah, there was definitely feedback.
Right now, Greg.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so we we serve thirty-six to the thirty-nine municipalities across the state. Uh, and thought, you know, it's just worth worth coming out here today to talk a little bit. Um, so uh, uh, Ripta today is providing, there are two bus routes that serve Portsmouth. There's Route sixty, which uh connects um, East and West Main Road up to Providence and also down to Newport. Um, that's pretty frequent service with service about every fifteen minutes during the course of the week of a weekday, uh, that reduces to about thirty minutes on Saturdays and forty-five minutes on Sundays. But essentially, any anybody, anybody in this, in the um town that's trying to get up to Providence can utilize Route sixty either by going out to East Main or West Main Road, and they'll have a bus there um, every fifteen minutes, and then conversely, if they stand on the other side of the road, it'll take them to Newport. Um, that we're seeing about, you know, about a hundred people a day that actually board the bus in in Portsmouth collectively uh on that route. Um, and then additionally, we provide what's called an express route that provides early morning and late afternoon service directly to and from Providence for people who are commuting into the city for work on Route sixty-one. Um, there's actually a park and ride lot in Portsmouth up near Boyd's Lane, uh, where um Route one thirty-eight is coming, comes into uh, comes into town. Uh, collectively, we have about a hundred and ten people a day that use both of those services combined. Um, we've got about fifty-two bus stops in in totality in Portsmouth, but we have no shelters. Um, and there's some history there about why we don't have shelters, but we would love to, uh, we're actually in the process right now of working with the state to to secure funding to uh, revamp and and expand our shelter program. We've got three hundred bus shelters across the state. Um, and we're looking to double that number in the next few years, so we can actually get up to six hundred shelters. Uh, and we'd love to bring some of those to Portsmouth so that our passengers who are waiting to take the bus will can do so and be out of, uh, you know, free from or stay out of the weather, essentially, stay dry when they're waiting for their bus. Um, just a few more services that we're providing to your community besides our fixed route bus service. We actually also provide what's called a complimentary paratransit service called Ride. This is for people who have a disability that prevents them from utilizing fixed route transit service. Um, and they qualify into that program, and the way that works is they essentially call Ripta, and we uh supply them with a door-to-door trip that takes them anywhere within our our service area. Um, and that's, that's, we determine our service area by basically measuring a three-quarters of a mile from any one of our bus routes. So if someone has a disability that lives in Portsmouth and can't get to their destination, they can call Ripta. We'll, we'll send a van over. It's a smaller vehicle. Send a van to their front door and take them to work or their doctor's appointments or grocery stores or wherever they're going. Um, the third tool, the third transit option we offer to this, the the town is called our Van Pool Service, and this is actually a service that's directed at commuters who might be working in locations that are outside of Providence, but have and have um commute needs, and essentially, this is grouping similar people together that are people that have similar commutes, grouping them together, and providing them with a van that they can then utilize uh, to uh get to and from work, uh, and reducing the over overall number of single occupancy vehicles. We see a lot of this success for this when you have um jobs or people might be going to like Quan's at Business Park or, you know, C V S or any of those kind of um, business parks that are located outside of um the urban core of Providence Providence. Um, you know, just a little bit about our system. We do offer, uh, our, we have, we offer a pretty economical choice. It's two dollars to board our buses. Um, but those buses, there's actually a typo on this one pager. It says it's two two hours for one dollar uh, for an additional transfer. That's incorrect. We actually offer two dollars if you if you pay utilizing our new fare collection system called WAVE. Um, you actually get one hour of of transportation of unlimited transfers included with that, so um, little better choice, but we offer uh monthly passes totaling seventy dollars, and we work with employers all over the state to help subsidize transportation for their employees, um, to help reduce their costs even further. Um, happy to take any questions you might have about what services we're offering. If you've got questions about why there are bus stops where they're located or uh anything like that, happy to, happy to take any questions you all might have.
When I, when I saw.
Okay, so, okay.
Oh. I was muted, sorry. Having a rough night. Greg, thank, thank you. Uh, hey, when I was going through the information, I I didn't realize, uh, I was trying to go through the bus stops in my head. I didn't realize there were fifty-two uh bus stops in Portsmouth. I I, I guess I tend to think of of some of the, you know, the the bigger bus stop locations in town. Um, and you you mentioned that that you're working with uh possibly DOT um to try and uh identify locations, uh, because obviously, you know, these these, I think, these bus stops would all be along uh DOTs. Roadways, right, one fourteen and one thirty-eight, uh, Bristol Ferry and uh, Foyt Lane area, those were all all the uh DOT roadways. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You have a a figure um that would show all fifty-two locations?
We do. Um, we we map each of them, uh, so we do have a a GIS layer available that shows where each bus stop is located. And we track our rider ridership at a at a bus stop level, so we know how active those bus stops are and whether or not there are people, you know, actively boarding on a regular basis. Uh, you know, we have fifty-two bus stop pairings. It's actually a hundred and about a hundred and five hundred and six bus stops in total. Um, you know, in each direction, and so um, some of those see very little activity, um, maybe one or two people a day. Where others, you might see, you know, twenty to thirty people. I mean, just based by, based on the fact that we only have about a hundred and uh, ten boardings a day on average in Portsmouth, most of these bus stops are pretty low activity. Um, so, yes, we would work with DOT, and we do have that layer available.
Okay, um. I know Mr. Crosby's got his hand up. Uh, and I will go to Mr. Crosby, uh, and then come back to counselors. Uh, Mr. Crosby?
Um, yes, you you just partially uh answered my question. I wonder if I could have better definition on on you say one hundred boardings a day. Is that both north-south and on West Main Road and East Main Road? Is that a sum total of the boardings in Portsmouth on Ripta per day?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and secondly, the the question that uh that I have is have, has Ripta, I know that um I've written into the comprehensive plan that we'd really very much like to extend um, bus bus service to places that are more than about a ten-minute walk from East West Main Road. And I'm thinking specifically about Island Park. If there any kind of a, and you mentioned the the flex service, which I think is important, but I wonder if you could um, if if you've discussed uh regular service to uh neighborhoods such as Island Park, which is far more than ten minutes of walk east or west Main Roads.
So we just completed in Jan- uh, in the last two of, um, we, I'm sorry, I'm getting weird again. Um. Sorry, um, we just completed in December of last year, a long-range transit master plan for the state. It's the first that we've ever done um, and as a state, and it was adopted by the State Planning Council back in December. I mean, that has a twenty-year window looking at it, where how how and where we want to expand service over the next twenty years. Um, and we took a pretty data-driven approach to that, looking at where there's the most demand and where it's where there um, there is uh, opportunity to uh really grow ridership within the state. Um, that that study didn't show a massive expansion of service in Portsmouth or bringing in any new services. Um, it doesn't mean that there's not a market for it, but it just meant that as far as, you know, as Ripta is concerned, there or as far as demand for fixed route transit is concerned. Demand for fixed route transit is concerned, there really wasn't enough ridership to really warrant bringing in a new service that's. A fixed route bus route going, operating directly within Portsmouth. Uh, Mr. Crosby, you did rest, reference our flex service, which is actually a different service that we don't currently provide. In, um, Portsmouth, uh, we do provide that further south. We have this service available in Middletown and in Newport. And essentially, it's an on-demand service that's open to the public, which differs from our ride service. Um, and could operate more flexibly within a zone. And it, it's, essentially, I like to refer to it as like Uber nineteen ninety-four. Uh, in the sense that it's, it's like an Uber service that would pick you up and take you anywhere within a given zone. So if there are destinations that are outside. Of our fixed route service, uh, fixed route buses, a passenger could essentially call Ripta and we would bring them, bring them to those locations. Um, we could explore something like that in the future. Uh, it really just depends on, um, you know, if there's enough demand to warrant that, um, you know. But, uh, or, you know. We could certainly explore that in the future. Um, I will say one recommendation that did come out of our master plan. Was the, was the idea of creating, um, what we're calling, uh. Uh, mobile, uh, neighborhood mobility hubs, which essentially are creating sort of transportation nodes. In communities around the state that might be interested in them, where you could have sort of a, um, a hub of activity. Where, um, where you could, you could have connections between Ripta, um, you know, if there's bike share services or scooter shares, or if there are. Um, other local transit providers, uh, giving people an option where sort of everything comes together into one spot. So if you have like senior centers that are providing transportation for, for residents. Uh, there's kind of a location where everything can come together. So if there are other options, you know, bike racks, those types of things where we can, um, help make transit. More usable at a community level, we would certainly be open to exploring that as well.
Good. Thank you very much. Um, I, 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 I'm concerned that, um. You know, I would very much like to see, extend service to. Um, the Portsmouth population that is more than about a ten or fifteen-minute walk from East Main Road. And I'm thinking, or, or West Main Road, and I'm thinking specifically about. Island Park, uh, which is a very densely populated neighborhood, and I would love to see, um, extended. Service into that neighborhood. So thank you for your answer, and, um, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Um. Mr. Drew?
Um, yeah, I just want to build on your question, Kevin, and ask Greg if, um, on top of having a map of where the bus stops are in Portsmouth. Could you provide an overlay of what the schedule is for each of those stops?
It's, it, at a certain level, we could. It's a little challenging because we don't. We don't track the exact schedule at each bus stop. We have, we have roughly about five thousand bus stops across the state. Um, we, we, we have what are called major time points, and so we have schedules available at major stops. Uh, and we essentially estimate the time travel, travel time between those. So it's, I wouldn't be able to necessarily say. This bus stop at Boyd, Boyd's Lane has the, a bus is following, it, it, buses arriving at the following times. I can certainly provide you copies of all of our pocket schedules that show. All of the time point or all of the, uh, uh, major time points and when buses arrive. Um, but you actually, the town of Portsmouth actually has pretty robust bus service with Route sixty. Uh, I mean, that operates, it starts surveying, that starts service about four forty-five in the morning, and it operates till about one fifteen in the morning. So you've almost got nearly twenty-four-hour service on Route sixty. Uh, and it has a frequency of almost, you know, every fifteen minutes. So it's, it's actually really outstanding bus service. Uh, that's not, not to sound too self-congratulatory, um, but it's, it's actually pretty, pretty decent bus service that, 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 uh, is an operation during weekdays. On, um, Saturdays and Sundays, it does drop a little bit in frequency, just because there tends to be less demand for our services. Uh, so we, we, we begin service on Saturdays at about five forty-five. And that ends about one thirty in the morning, and that's every thirty minutes. And then on Sundays, we start at six thirty and operate till about midnight, and that goes to every forty-five. Um, Route sixty-one's a little different because that's directed at a primarily a commuter base. You're, 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 you've got, um, three trips in the morning that operate to Providence, and then you've got three trips in the afternoon that are dropping people off that come, are coming back from Providence.
And the, and the ones that are going to and from Providence, um, what is the situation with Kennedy Plaza? Are you guys, have you decided what to do there?
Um, Kennedy Plaza continues to be a hot topic. Uh, it's, you know, it's definitely. Um, you know, there, the city of Providence has their own plans for what they'd like to see happen there. Um, we're, we don't own, without going into too much detail, we don't own the plot. We, we own the building and we have a lot of, um, assets around the plaza, but we don't. Actually own the land. It's all owned by the city. We have a long-term lease for it, and so. Um, you know, we are working with them collaboratively to figure out what our future is there. Um, one thing that we've been very clear about is we don't want to make our transit system harder for people to use. And we want to make it, we want to make it easier for people to use the bus and to get where they need, not where they get, where they, um, need to go. Uh, and so it's, it's a, it's a continuing dialogue for sure. Um, and there's definitely, definitely some challenges. Um, you know, the, the express bus service, the sixty-one X is a little unique in the sense that it actually, because it's focused on commuters. Um, who aren't generally going to Kennedy Plaza to transfer. They might be going to places in the Jewelry District or further south. Uh, those buses actually circulate downtown. We call, uh, we call it the, um, down-city loop. And essentially, it, it, it brings people to the front door of their business, so they don't have to just get off the bus at KP. Um, but the KP, the KP, uh, the riders of Route sixty would be impacted by those changes for sure. And we're working really closely with the city to make sure that we're leaving our passengers in a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of just questions, um, for Greg. Uh, Greg, if, if. We were to be moving forward, uh, obviously, Ripta has, um, different types of bus shelters. Um, I mean, Portsmouth's a little more rural, so, uh, I would, I would be concerned about, uh, obviously, you mentioned safety. So, you know, obviously, passenger safety is. Important for anyone who's waiting for, for a bus. Um, but. Would, with the town council, obviously, the town council would have, would have, um, input into locations. Would we also have input into the type of shelter, the type of bus shelter that could be proposed?
That's a really great question. So, and this is, this is a, this is a, so shelters are a little bit of a difficult topic at times. I'm just gonna be very blunt. Um, uh, so right now, the way, the way bus shelters work at Ripta, there's sort of two, there's two primary ways this works. Uh, we have a contract with an advertising company that essentially, um, we outsource our shelter program to. And they are responsible for citing shelters. They're responsible for constructing them. They're responsible for maintaining them. They're responsible for snow removal. They're responsible for pretty much everything, soup to nuts, uh, that a shelter, that, that we have, permitting all of that. Um, in return, they get to advertise in those shelters and generate revenue from them, but then, but they are, they're responsible for everything else. Um, that model has been in place for about twenty years, and we, we switched to a new vendor. Or longer than twenty years, I should say, and we actually switched to a new vendor for that contract about two years ago. And unfortunately, that really, um, did not work so well. Um, that new vendor was not living up to their, uh, terms of their contract. We've been. Um, we've actually recently severed ties with them pretty much completely. Um, and that leads sort of to the other, other way we deal with shelters. And the other way we deal with shelters is. Um, we have partnerships around the state for shelters that are developed in different communities that might have a stronger opinion about what shelters look like or where they want them placed. Um, I would say, you know, Barrington is a great example of this. If you drive through Barrington, you'll notice that the shelters don't look. Any of the bus shelters in Barrington look, don't look like shelters also in our system. The town of Barrington constructs and maintains those, or has constructed or maintained those shelters on their own. We certainly have given them input about what we think would work. And where they, where shelters would be successful, but the town has, um, had, is, is wholly responsible for the maintenance of those shelters. Um. We are in the process right now of revamping our shelter program completely, um, because of the fact that we've had a, a vendor that has not been working for us. Um, and I expect in the next. As I was saying earlier, we're working right now with the state on identifying funding through the, um, the rescue plan funds that the state has received. If we're successful in that, we're hoping to completely rehab our shelter program, replace all of our shelters that are old, because. Quite frankly, most of those shelters are about ten to fifteen years old and have gone well beyond their, their intended life. Uh, replace all of those and then also expand our, our program by about another three hundred shelters. That would bring us to about six hundred bus shelters statewide. Um, as part of that, Ripta would take on the full maintenance of those. We would be working, you know, internally to make sure they're maintained, they're permitted, they're safe, they're built to ADA standards. Um, and we certainly would work with each municipality to determine. Where it's appropriate to install shelters. As far as the input into those, we would certainly be willing to work with municipalities on if there, if there are specific concerns about them. But because we're taking on that cost entirely of our, on our own, we are looking for ways to, to streamline maintenance. And, 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 and therefore, we want it, we're trying to choose one shelter type that we would apply statewide that would then be. You know, easily maintained by our maintenance crew, so we don't have to go out and buy twenty different-sized glass panels or those types of things. Um, doesn't mean that there's not opportunity to inform that decision. Certainly doesn't mean we, we're, we're trying to, um, uh. You know, we're not trying to, uh, impart our will on the communities if they don't want it. Um, we'd certainly be, be more than willing to work with. With you all on, on, on how that would work out, but right now we are looking at trying to figure out if there's, if there's a way to streamline it down to one general shelter type. Um, one thing that I'm hopeful, I have not won this battle yet, but I'm definitely working on it, is these new shelters. If we're maintaining them, they would not have advertising in them. They would just be a. Uh, Ripta product, so you wouldn't have to necessarily worry about advertising content in them. Um, uh, we, you know, ideally, we'd have just a shelter that's available to our passengers and we, um, and, and, you know. It, it's a lot easier to put a shelter when you don't have an advertiser in it, in it, so.
You just, uh, hit the nail on the head there. Um, just, uh, order of magnitude and, um, and. Hey, you mentioned that Barrington, uh, provided their own bus shelters and they maintain their own bus shelters. A tip, a ballpark cost per shelter. Are we talking about maybe five thousand dollars? I, and, and I say this in, in all the, I mean, I know, I know that's a loaded question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm familiar with Kennedy Plaza.
Yeah, yes, you are.
Um, but, but I think what, what's important for, for counselors and, and maybe even the public to understand. Um, is that the, those bus shelters can be very costly. And, you know, you're, you know, eh, because you also have options to maybe run power to them for lights, uh, as well as. Um, there are message boards or things like that that can make riders aware of arrival times. There's apps. I know you have some applications that. That, you know, if you're, if you're a frequent user of the, of the service, then you're probably already aware that there's apps and things like that, but, um. Did, with the technology, you can provide a lot of different, uh, information in bus shelters. So it's not a, it's not a, uh, a night. You know, there's a, a live, a large menu of bus shelters and, um, you know, they can vary proudly. I'm gonna just say on the low end. A few thousand dollars, four or five thousand dollars on up. Is that?
Um, I would say probably closer to about, uh, probably about twelve, fifteen thousand for a relatively inexpensive shelter. Um, you know, and then quite frankly, they can go as high as you want them to go. I mean, and that, that's not an exaggeration. Um. Uh, yeah, I would say about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for, for a reasonably nice, solid-built structure. Um, you know, and that's pretty bare, it's not gonna include a lot in terms of additional amenities, but as you were saying, you know, we can. Um, you know, we can bring in solar lighting and we can bring in all kinds of messaging things for passengers who are waiting at shelters, so they know when their bus is coming. And helping communicate with them directly. So if there's a delay in service, they know what's going on. Um, additionally, you know, we like to include things like benches. We like to include bike racks. We like to include leaning rails. Um, you know, trash cans, those types of things, just trying to make it as. Pleasant of an experience as possible. We, we, we like to refer to bus shelters and bus stops as kind of the front door to our system. And, you know, how are we trying to welcome people onto our buses? And we have a long way to go there, but we're, we're making the, we're making the right steps. So. Um, yeah, but, you know, I'd say anywhere from about ten to fifteen thousand dollars would be a reasonable price for a shelter.
Thank you, Greg. Um, well, I, that's all I really have for questions at the moment. Uh. I think it was, you know, a great, great presentation, um, kind of helps us get a sense as to. The, the extent of Ripta's service within the town. Um, and, you know, currently, I think it's, you know, as you mentioned, there are, there are no bus shelters currently, unfortunately. Uh, and I think a lot of that has to do with the, you know, uh, concern over. Uh, the advertising and, and things of that nature, which can, can cause, you know, some, uh, visual. Objections, uh, to, to motorists and, and things like that. Um, but I still think it's something that we, we need to take hard, look at and, uh, and, and have discussions about. That's all I have. Uh, do any other counselors have any questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, I have one or maybe two quick questions. I'd like to expand on, uh, Mr. Crosby's, um. Discussion about a ten, fifteen-minute walk and whether or not we can look at. Expanding or. Getting service into Island Park at least a couple of times a day. Um, right now, the bus goes up East Main Road, goes right past the Park Avenue. Area. And then goes down to Boyd's Lane, takes a left, goes back up to Bristol. Um, I don't know if there's a way to do a study to see how many people would, how many more people would use the bus if it went down Park Avenue and came back around Anthony. You know, to kind of hit, you know, go down Park Avenue, hit the Hummels, and then come back up Anthony Road past Common Fence Point. How many more people would use that rather than having to? Get dropped off at a park and ride where there isn't a shelter to stand. I don't, it, it looks like, if I'm wrong, but it, it's a split. So every fifteen minutes, there's a bus on either East Main Road or a West Main Road. So it's, eh, twice an hour on each, each side.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if maybe once every two hours, one of those buses goes down Park Avenue, loops around and goes back, rather than just going past the post office, going to Boyd's Lane and taking a left. I don't know if there's a way to study that.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly, so some of the things we can do, um, definitely, we can, you know, we can. Well, number one is we can see if there's anybody who's actually making that walk today that's already riding, um, and that's pretty easy to do. I, I can assign a staff person to. Essentially go sit at a bus stop for an afternoon or a couple of days and just go see, see how, see where people are coming from. That's pretty easy. Um, you know, we could also. Um, survey some of our passengers to see if there's, if there's, you know, eh, get, just ask directly. Um, as far as, you know, surveying or, or getting a sense of if there's a demand for it, uh, we could certainly talk about, um. You know, what it might take or, or, or ways to go about sort of expanding service into that, into those neighborhoods. Um, you know, I think one of the things we think about when we're talking about bus service and whether or not we make expansions. Uh, or, or even just pilot, to pilot to see if there's a, a market there. Um, one thing that's challenging about Route sixty in particular and something we're very cognizant of is the travel time for our passengers. Um, you know, the trip between Newport and Providence is not a short one, and even if you're getting on at the midway point in Portsmouth or, or, uh, or, you know, uh, Bristol or any of the, any of the communities along the way. Um, you, you're still looking at travel times of, you know, forty-five minutes sitting on the bus to get to your destination. And so we're very cognizant about making sure that we're not. Putting a ton of burden on people who are riding the bus by making them go for trips into neighborhoods that they don't necessarily need to go to or want to go to. Um, you know, I, I, you know, if you're, if you're in Portsmouth and you're going to Providence, you're probably not gonna take a, a. And you're driving, you're probably not gonna take a, um, a ride through a neighborhood you don't necessarily need to get to. You're gonna. Probably figure out the fastest way to do that, and we like to do the same for our passengers. Doesn't mean we won't make deviations, and I'm certainly not suggesting we won't consider it. I'm just, you know, uh, we, we, we have to weigh that because it does, the longer you make people's trips, the less attractive that, that transit tends to be. Uh, but we can, but we can certainly take a look and, um, figure out if there's a way. Uh, to, to, to better serve that neighborhood. And there, there are, we have several tools in our arsenal to help us, help us address that. Um, eh, you know, so what we can do is, I, I've already got a list of a couple of things that we're gonna provide you all. Um, I very much view this as just sort of an opening the door. We've been actually doing some version of this across, in communities across the state, and I think. We just, m- most town councils or city councils have no idea what Ripta does in their community, and so we've actually done this in. Several communities and, um, and had similar conversations. And so we're very, you know, I view this as, as opening a door and, and starting a dialogue about how we can better serve your community. Um, and so definitely, we can look into that, um, and see what we might be able to do, um, and just keep the dialogue going. These are, there might be ways that we. Um, and so definitely we can look into that, um, and see what we might be able to do, um, and just keep the dialogue going, because there, there might be ways that we can address this. Um, maybe not by deviating Route sixty, but by, you know, doing some other things, there's always possibility.
Even if it's not a full deviation of Route sixty all the way through Island Park. You could just take the right, go to Boyd's Lane and then take a left there as well, so that's not, that's adding on a minute rather than ten minutes.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Is there, has Ripta looked into any? Other park and ride locations along the West Main Road corridor, and I specifically thinking in Lawton Valley down by across from Raytheon. Uh, where there's an open lot. Where?
No. The short answer is no, we haven't.
Okay.
Um, we, if you, if there's a, um, if there's a location that you all are aware of, especially if it's, you know, um. If mutually owned or state owned, we can certainly take a look, um. Always, always, I mean, that would be great, but it's, we have not, we have not expanded our park and ride program of late.
There, there's no park and ride specifically on. The west side of town. Um, and I'm thinking. Andrew, welcome back.
Are you talking about the property across from Raytheon that the lot, the large trucks park in sometimes?
That where they used, the, the staging area they used when they reconstructed the water plant. The state used to use, the DOT used to use it as a staging area for their, um, salt piles in the winter time.
Yeah, the city and state. The city of Newport owns it.
Okay. So there is a potential. Option of them either leasing it or donating it to Ripta for a parking ride, if we ask nicely.
We can take a look, sure, is, just so I'm clear, is this a little, I mean, I'm not familiar with the location, is it in Portsmouth, but it's owned by the city of Newport?
Yes, the city of Newport owns the water supply, so it's part of the Lawton Valley reservoir.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's right on the West Main Road corridor across from Raytheon, um, it, it's, it provides a parking here because the loss of the times of the buses. I know some people have had issues with being able to catch the. The sixty on East Spain Road at the right time in order to get the work on time in, in Providence.
Gotcha, we can sure, that would be, yeah, we definitely can take a look at that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Hamilton. Um, I'm not seeing any, any additional questions or comments. I just want a couple of checks. Okay. Uh. Well, again, Greg, uh, thank you for the update, um. And presentation, I think it was very, very informative, um. We have a, uh, our, our next item is more about. A, a resolution, um, so at, at this point, um. I, I think we're. We're gonna conclude this presentation unless there's anything, uh, any last comments from a counselor. Seeing none, then, uh, again, thank you very much, Greg, and, uh, we look forward to, uh. To, uh, working with Ripta in the future.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Hey. Our next item, um, is a resolution on Ripta bus shelters, uh, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Okay.
I believe it needs a second, right?
It would, it would need a second.
Yes, I'll, I'll, this is Mark Ryan, I'll second it.
For, for some discussion, um. And, and I just wanna remind folks, um, that. We, or clarify for my own, uh, own basis here, um. We, if we approve this. This would be authorized, this would allow us to. Uh, work with Ripta. And to identify shelters in Portland. I, I think we just have to be conscious of the fact that if, if, under their current program. Um, those shelters, if approved, um, could allow for advertising. Under their current program. I, it was encouraging to hear that if, if Ripta enters into a, a new arrangement. Uh, has a funding mechanism that, you know, advertising would, would no longer be, uh, or, or advertising would be limited or, or eliminated from the bus shelters. Um, the only other community, uh, is Barrington that, you know, provides their own bus shelters and, and as you heard, that, that can be a costly endeavor. Um, so I just wanted to, to, to restate that as well, um. You know, I, you know, public transportation is, is a, is, is definitely something that, uh. Um. And so I, I, I think we just need to make sure we're all aware of, of what, uh, what the resolution is. You have a motion and a second, is there any, any further discussion, comment?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm in the same ballpark that you are here in, in terms of advertising, making sure the. Facilities are aesthetically pleasing to town and are not just ugly square boxes. Um, I would be hopeful that. With new funding, if, if there is an infrastructure bill ever passed. That there might be some funding available to put some of these on, to help both Ripta and the town, but. Um. I did, yeah, I just, I'm worried about advertising and some of the other damage that comes along with bus shelters on occasion, that's probably why the council made a resolution years ago to. Not have the, the shelters.
Mr. President, it's Linda Ujifusa, I just feel that, um, because so many people who live on Equidnic Island leave Equidnic Island to work. And conversely, people who work on Equidnic Island have to come from off island and, eh, public transportation is so important. Uh, for that purpose to serve our, our working folks and also, um, as I age, I know you don't wanna see me driving around and I hope to. I have taken, uh, the bus to Providence and as I age, I certainly would want to do that rather than drive myself, so I, I think that. There's so many reasons for us to be pushing for better, uh, public transportation, and it's just so sad to see people standing out in the rain. Um, waiting for a bus, that's just wrong, and I, I would hope that we can reconcile your aesthetic concerns with the need of people to have public transportation. Um, for, uh. Uh, their work and just for their general mobility, so I would, I vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, no, all, all very good comments and, uh, no, I just, I, I just wanted to clarify, um, and, and I. I think the spirit of the resolution is, is, is there, which would allow us to work with, with Ripta on these locations, because. I, I think what was probably not discussed is many of these bus shelters, um. They probably do not have adequate access to the bus shelter, uh, meaning that there's no sidewalk. Or, or a crosswalk, uh, to get you to some of these locations. Um, and I think that's something that DOT is probably looking at when they're looking at East Main Road and West Main Road. You know, when, when you see a, a traffic light with a, with just a wheelchair ramp over there and no other sidewalk. Well, they have, they have a means to get you across the street and that's, you know, I'm thinking of the one at Union Street, uh, near the State Police barracks and. I've, I've seen someone out there flagging down a bus with their cellphone at night, um. So again, I, I think, uh, as, as Greg mentioned, there's, there's a lot of work to do. And I believe that there's currently a, a handful of very good locations that, that could support a bus shelter. Um, that, that are accessible, that do have sidewalks or are close to the park and ride, so, you know, I, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of. These options, I just wanted to clarify that, um. Hopefully we'll, we'll have more input into, uh, the, the final locations and some of the aesthetics that go along with.
There's multiple areas in town that have concrete pads, but just no shelter.
Yes. Yeah. So I think one of the things that Ripta has a, has a concern with, and, and if, and we probably should have asked Greg this, is if they build a bus shelter. I don't know if they can put a shelter up that is not ADA accessible. Um, so that if they, I, he mentioned, you know, the shelters and ADA accessibility, I, I think they, you know, they probably have to do some additional improvements in order to. To put shelters up, uh, so again, it's all part of the work in progress and, uh, I'll leave it at that. So we, we have a, a motion and a second, um, I do not see any further comments or hands up. So, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
I.
Mr. Bettermeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to new business number three. Time phase development plan for Melville, Melville Park. Mr. Luce? Um. Do we have?
Steven, would you raise your hand, please?
See, there we go.
All right, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we have you.
Okay. Well, good evening, I'm Stephen Luce and I reside at Two Maple Terrace in Middletown. I'm the chairperson of the Melville Park Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We have put together the beginnings of a plan for the future of Melville Park. It is not exhaustive, there is much work still to do, and a few aspects of the plan have already been accomplished. However, it does list most of the major issues, um, currently facing the park. This plan was based on input from both current and from past committee members. Now first, let me say that Melville Park is an extremely important asset, not only for Portsmouth, but for the whole island. Just to list some of its attributes. It is the largest expanse of publicly owned and publicly accessible forest land on the island. It is a part of an even larger town-owned area that includes the Melville Ponds Campground. The Dog Park and the adjoining public roadways and parking areas. Melville Park has a brook, which is currently unnamed, along with nine ponds. Most were created by concrete dams. One pond has thoroughly drained, leaving just the original broken at its place. There are several small wooden bridges and boardwalks that span the broken other creeks in various locations. Between ponds eight and nine, which is the lower pond, there is a picturesque waterfall with a steep, narrow gorge. There are many animals such as deer, chipmunk, rabbits, swans, turtles and ducks. There are centuries old historic features as well, for example, stone walls and a few cellar holes from the Mott family. There is the remnant of the dam that provided drinking water to Louisville Hospital during Civil War. There is a very large and tall standpipe or could be called a water tower. That was constructed around nineteen oh five to supply water to the Navy steamships from Bradford Coling Station. There are World War Two buildings and constructions. A plaque on the dam for Pond Two shows that dam was constructed in nineteen forty-two by the WPA, the Works Progress Administration. There are narrow trails that wind through the forest and also wide trails, basically roads that board on much of the park. Those narrow trails are used by local hikers, dog walkers and bicyclists. The wider ones are used by the same, plus the occasional horseback rider. People also come to the park to birdwatch and to photograph throughout the year the many beautiful natural scenes. Some people also come to the park to camp with committee permission. For example, a scout troop just camped near the lower pond this past weekend over Saturday night. There has been a noticeable increase in people visiting the park over the past year. That was a direct result of COVID, since the park was one of the few public places to go during the pandemic. However, the numbers are still high, even with the easing of COVID restrictions and more options for recreation available to people. It remains to be seen if this increased traffic continues. Hopefully it will, as more people who come to enjoy the park may increase their involvement in preserving and maintaining it. For example, Daniela Abbott, who I'm sorry to see is not here tonight. Um, her Girl Scout troop has recently expressed interest in installing a few benches in the park. Additionally, many people, um, come to the park each year to specifically fish from the two stocked ponds. Those are the Upper Pond or Pond One, also known as Thurston Gray Pond next to Melville Elementary School. And the Lower Pond or Pond Nine, that's near the bay. Those ponds were stocked this year at the beginning of the fishing season and again just today. Now this brings me to the first major issue facing the park, and that is the problem of algae in the ponds. The worst algae are the blue-green toxic cyanobacteria that often appears as the weather warms. That causes all fishing to stop. Such toxic algae actually prevented the stocking of the ponds last year by Rhode Island DEM. However, even non-toxic algae are a problem as it affects people's enjoyment of the waterways. The committee has been working on finding and implementing a viable and cost-effective solution to this problem. However, it may be too large of an issue for just the committee to tackle. Finally, the committee members are adamant that failure to eliminate the toxic algae will result in more years of the DEM not stocking the ponds. Which will cause many people to lose out on enjoying their fishing hobby. The next important issue facing the park and much of the eastern US is the destructive invasive vine called Oriental Bittersweet. The vines strangle, smother and reduce the growth of, and eventually pull down even the tallest of the hardwood trees. There are currently hundreds of trees that are being engulfed by the vines. Committee members have freed a few of the large trees over the years, but much more needs to be done. It is not a complicated procedure to cut the vines, just time consuming. However, there are still whole areas that have not, um, been affected or minimally effective. So the task to save the trees from this constant killer is not impossible. Another major issue, um. To emphasize from this plan concerns the vandalism and littering. One area that experiences this problem quite a lot is the park, parking lot at the bottom of Smith Road. That is the lot DPW uses for dumping and shipping vegetation. Unfortunately, some people use that lot to dop, to dump everything and anything you can think of, and also to do much more late at night. Though technically not an official part of the park, that lot, um, is the lot most people use to park their cars when they come to visit Melville Park. The other area of high vandalism is the concrete World War Two blockhouse near the waterfall that the committee uses for storage. Its bottom floor was also used as a trash can until a door was placed last year to secure it from trespassers. However, it is still a target for graffiti taggers. The committee does have a trail cam there, but there have been numerous issues with the camera. The committee hopes the town can install an integrated closed-circuit TV camera at the parking lot, especially as that it is a town-used DPW lot. If it can be tied into the police department, it may stop such a, you know, such illegal activity. So algae, bittersweet vandalism and graffiti. Uh, these problems have plagued the park for decades and we need help to stop them. A more recent issue has been the loss of many trees and other vegetation in the western part of the park. And we, we need help to fix that, too. The reintroduction of native species in all areas of the park recommended by professionals will go a long way in maintaining the long-term health of the park. The Melville Park Committee is composed of volunteers, we do our best to tackle some of these issues and more, the best that we can. We pick up large amounts of litter, we clear the trails of fallen trees and overgrowth, we spread mulch on uneven and wet areas. We coordinate with scout groups for them to complete their own projects in the park. We actually recently identified, applied for and was approved for a grant to install a bridge over the waterfall. And to make some of the roadways accessible to outdoor wheelchairs. We will continue to provide as much support and advice for the continuing preservation and maintenance of Melville Park with the resources at our disposal. However, the Melville Park Committee can use all the assistance that the town of Portsmouth can provide to reduce or eliminate these and other problems. Therefore, we do look forward to growing the connections between Melville Park. And other interested groups and parties, both within town government and among the people of Portsmouth, thank you very much for your time. Um, any questions?
Um. Ms. Ujifusa?
Oh, I just wanted to thank, um, Mr. Luce and all the members of the committee, I've been lucky enough to go to the park several times and. Uh, a lot of the meetings of the Melville Park Committee and also work on that grant application for the trail, and it was great that they did award it, um, I'm. And I just think it is such a beautiful place, and you guys work so hard to take care of the problems that you've identified. Just want to thank you and thank you for making the efforts to connect with other committees. I know Jennifer is on, working ahead on the Solid Waste Committee to deal with the trash as well. So it's just a really great committee, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, Linda, especially on that application.
All right. Any more questions or comments from councillors at this time? Seeing none. There are no hands up in the audience as well. Mr. Luce, thank you. Thank you for that update. We will keep it on file. And again, thank you for all your service over there and you know, making Melville Park what it is, applying for those grants. To provide the support when we have the wherewithal. Thank you.
And thank you. And let me just finish up by saying this was basically a general plan, general information, and as you can tell, there's nothing specific right now that we're needing, other than perhaps some professional help with the algae control. So anything else that you guys could recommend on that going forward, please let us know.
Thank you. All right. At this time now, we will we will move on to new business number four. It's a resolution on credit cards for DPW police and fire for small purchasers.
When I first came in to work at the town council, one of the issues that I spoke with and also Fire Chief was just being able to be a little bit more flexible and get things done quicker and through different avenues. And what we're turning here is giving them the ability to have a very limited credit card for the big three. And with that, we did require a resolution from the town council.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a quick question. This is Keith Hamilton. Mr. Lasky, are we looking at just one card per department or two cards per department?
Yeah, one card per department.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you all. Onto new business number five. It's a public hearing. Changes to the town code, Chapter 124. It's titled Burning Outdoor. Chief Ford?
You hear me now?
Yeah, we got you now. There you are. We lost you for a minute.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay. So we've got some modifications to the ordinance?
Yes, as you're aware, burning, unpermitted burning has been a problem throughout the town, certainly down by one of the beaches, but in other areas. When reviewing our burning ordinance, I found a lot of things that were either older or misleading or didn't quite define what we have today. So what I did was like, look at our ordinance, and I went through it, adding things, removing things, and trying to get a couple more definitions in there to make a difference between a contained fire or an open burn fire and so forth, to allow for things that we do in this day and age, like chimneys and small residential fire pits. So these changes added before you, I think we'll just clear it up a little bit better. It will make it easier to understand and a little easier for us to enforce the burning ordinance.
All of the changes were very straightforward. Additions in blue and deletions in red. So we have any questions, comments?
Mr. President, I just have one question. Why did you take out in 124-3 that commercial and industrial operations are not permitted to burn?
Again, that was one of the areas that was a little confusing or didn't quite fit. And if you notice down below that in blue, we put that "commercial and industrial property shall be allowed to obtain a burn permit" for the general maintenance of their properties, much like you can as a resident. So why we changed that? We ran into a situation where we had a business owner who lived on the property. And he wanted to break up his debris and burn his twigs, like a lot of people do. And he couldn't get a permit for that because it was a commercial property. What I believe the intent of that was, back whenever it was first introduced, was a commercial property. They can't be going back and burning the pallets that their equipment comes in or their product. They can't be burning big cardboard boxes that comes with their manufacturing process. So I tried to clean that section up by striking that line, but then putting a mission down below that a business can get a permit for the purposes of maintaining their property, but they have to go through us.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief Ford, that would also apply, because you said "commercial and industrial property." There are probably several properties in Portsmouth where we have really residential uses on both commercial and industrial properties. Land has been converted over time, and there's probably extensive areas down along Willow Lane where there's a lot of condominiums and homes. That's all, pretty sure that's all industrial land that would never result. So that's, it would apply to the property, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. We do have a hand up. This is a public hearing. Mr. Greve?
Hello, Tom Greve. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We have you, Mr. Greve.
Okay, it's 110 Sayer Drive in Portsmouth. Um, I think Chief Ford should add one more def- I'm sorry.
Lost you.
I, I, I think Chief Ford should add one more definition to this. In Section 124-2, he talks about "large logs shall not be allowed to be burned." I think the definition of a large log, is that a three-inch log? Is that a six-inch log? A 12-inch log? That's going to cause people to misunderstand and probably future, perhaps litigation even, if it's not defined as to what a large log is. The other thing that I would, I'd like to say is that I understand the position that the particular person that Chief Ford talked about was in. But in most cases, commercial and industrial lots are much larger than residential lots. And that means there's a lot more to burn. We really need to be cognizant of the air quality in the area. The more that's burned, the more carbon dioxide we're putting into the atmosphere and the more pollution we're putting in. I don't think adding the fact that commercial and industrial places can burn even to maintain their lots, which, as I said, are traditionally much larger than a residential lot, i- is appropriate. I'd like to see, you know, that perhaps redefined to an industrial lot that's being used residentially or something like that would be able to do it. So those are the two things I have. Definition of the large log. And, yeah, I also have a problem with the commercial and industrial areas being permitted to burn to maintain their property. I think, as I said, I think that may be going too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greve.
If I may?
Yes.
I certainly could put a definition of a log log, put a diameter in there, just as a point that was brought in, purposely put in there due to a fairly recent fire where there were 24-inch diameter tree stumps there that wouldn't have gone out for a week. So we want, but we can certainly clear that up a little bit. Again, as far as the commercial properties, it is at the discretion of the Fire Chief. So certainly, size and what they wanted to do would come into play. Again, I revert back to the small business owner, the small commercial property, that he wants to just clean up his property like everyone else. That's the type of person that we've run into.
Chief, this is a public hearing, and so, I mean, the council could also make modifications. I mean, would you consider a large lot, like anything larger than 12 inches in diameter or 18 inches in diameter? Or do you need time to think about it?
I, I think once you get over anything eight inches and above, the length of time that's going to take to burn becomes the problem. So if I had to put a size limitation on it, I wouldn't go any larger than eight inches.
All right. Thank you, Chief. We do have another hand up. Mr. Fitzmorris?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I understand, this proposed ordinance or the changes to this ordinance, permits are general, and I think they should be specific to particular dates. I had a neighbor that used to burn a lot, and and when I asked Fire Chief, previous Fire Chief about that, I was told that the, he had an open-ended permit. He could burn anytime he wanted to, and it got out of hand. There's a number of complaints. So I think it's, these things should be specific to the date specified. I don't have a problem with a couple of days in a row, but certainly not weeks on end.
I'm not familiar with the permit timeframe. Is that, is that something, Chief, that is a concern or what's your opinion?
I certainly understand that point. Anybody who burns, I believe our permits right now, we have had some change. I believe they're seven days. But they have to call every time that they're going to burn, because we actually have to check with the state and see what the recommendation is. We get no burn days. So anybody that has a permit is supposed to call up. And they, and they are, I'm sorry, they are good for seven days. So you can't get a burn permit, and it's good for the whole year.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see any more hands. Any comments, questions from councillors? Okay. I don't see any more. This is a public hearing. Are there any further comments from the public? If not, we'll look for a motion to close the public here.
Moved. Keith Hamilton.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public here. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Discussion for councillors. I think the ordinance seems very straightforward. You did bring up a good point about maybe a definition for logs, large logs, and the chief is in your mouth, Chief, but anything, anything eight inches in diameter, eight inches or in diameter or larger shall be considered a large log. If we just added that in ordinance, that may, that satisfy the definition? I don't know.
Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on. I just need to ask the chief a question.
Was that directed to me?
Yeah, so Chief, on a large diameter log, if we modify this ordinance to just provide that definition, would eight inches in diameter, anything larger than eight inches in diameter be considered a large log?
Well, I would just clarify and say, logs or stumps larger than eight inches in diameter shall be prohibited.
And what the length of the, is the length a factor as well?
Well, the outdoor fire, the open fire is three feet by three feet.
Right.
So they can't have an eight-foot log in there. So we just said, you know, logs or stumps in larger diameter than eight inches shall be prohibited. I think that would cover it.
All right. I think that's something to, just my opinion here, trying to see if we can work through this. Mr. Kelly, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say I'm okay with it the way it is. I read it as logs and tree stumps of comparable size.
Okay.
Mr. President, just to make it easy, we'll just, I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance to read large logs and tree stumps over eight inches in diameter shall not be allowed to be burned.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre, Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero.
President, I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance as amended.
Andrew Kelly, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief? Thank you. Okay. Onto correspondence.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Andrew Kelly, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. And on to future meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 9th. That's our budget hearing. And it's a Wednesday. Then we have June 14th is our next council meeting and June 28th.
Mr. President, in regards to the June 9th meeting, I know we haven't figured out a, or haven't gotten any guidance yet, but would it be possible for us to have that meeting at the high school auditorium? Where people could still socially distance, we'd be in person, we could socially distance as a council and school committee. Allow people to be able to attend in person. Since.
June, we could, we can, we can try and coordinate that, get the approvals in place, and.
It also has a much better sound system than the middle school, since it's all been upgraded.
Yes.
And I, I believe it's got AV where it could be streamed as well.
But we may still be under that, we may still be under that.
The issue is that the executive order still stands, and that's what is being, has been discussed at the state level over the last few weeks, as we're trying to figure out how we do our, our meetings, even after we open town hall. So as the executive order stands right now, until it's amended or it's allowed to last, these are the way we're supposed to be holding the meetings, and you have to allow remote participation. So we'd have to make sure that we, we can have that capability at whatever venue we hold a meeting at, right?
I would like to prepare for both, that's all.
We prepare for both, and we'll try to do that at the high school if we can get everything coordinated.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
This is Mark Ryan, motion to adjourn.
Second, Andrew Kelly.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yafuza?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero, thank you all, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Good morning, Mr. Kelly.